All right. I'd like to thank everybody for being in attendance this evening. Today is Monday, April 3rd, 2023. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilmember Maldonado?
Here.
Councilmember Bucelado?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Cortez? Councilmember Larson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Here.
Mayor Walter is here. At this time, we will rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Our first item is Call to the Public. Call to the Public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Town Council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I do have one call to the public at this time, Ms. Kathleen Lehman. How are you this evening?
I'm good, thank you Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council. My name is Kathleen Lehman. I'm a resident in Florence over in Anthem at Merrill Ranch. I'm representing tonight several of my neighbors who attended a meeting with Supervisor Jeffrey McClure a few weeks ago. As we talked about the last council meeting, there was a lot of discussion about Hunt Highway. I see that we have an approval or disapproval for Item 9B this evening, and I would just urge the council to answer for an approval of that so that we can get the survey going and get the construction going. I just think that this is really impacting our town and how we can get not only businesses, but support the residents who already live here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else, either online or in person, that would like to speak at this time? If you're online, just go ahead and raise your thumb or your hand, and in person as well. Seeing no such movement, we'll close our first call to the public. Item 6 is our public hearing and presentation. Public hearing to receive public comments to... on increases to sanitation rates and fees, and discussion approval/disapproval of authorizing recommended increases to sanitation rates and fees to be in effect May 1st, 2023. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. We're coming to you this evening first to ask to hold a public hearing for the rates and fees. It's been duly advertised on our website in excess of 60 days and in the newspaper. This would increase your sanitation rate from $19.08 a month to $20, an increase of 92 cents or about a little bit over $11 annually. This is to support the sanitation fund. That is an enterprise fund, and we like our enterprise funds to support themselves. So annually, it would probably increase our revenues about $72,000 to cover the cost of operational costs of the sanitation fund.
Council, do you have any questions or comments? Seeing no such moment or motion, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in person or online that would like to speak to this agenda item? Okay, seeing no such movement, I am going to go ahead and close the hearing presentation item. It is noted for action, so at this time, I need a motion. There is no motion, so it died on the floor.
What are we making a motion for? I think that's where we're a little like, it was a public hearing, so we're just wondering, maybe what are we making a motion for?
So the item was public hearing to receive public comments on increases to sanitation rates and fees, and then discussion approval/disapproval of authorizing recommended increases to the sanitation rates and fees effective May 1st, 2023. Becky had put the agenda item together in a packet. I'll ask you to do a presentation at this time. Cliff, can I proceed, or does this... because it died on the floor, need to be put on the next agenda?
I think we just didn't know what to do.
I think you can bring it up again if there was a question from the question.
Okay, perfect, then we'll proceed. I just wanted to make sure I was following the proper chain.
Yes, again, this is to increase our sanitation from $19.08 a month to $20, and this would be approximately a 92 cents a month increase or a annual increase of about $11.04 in sanitation rates and fees for the residential customers. Now, the commercial customers, their rates are increased by 10%, and that is just a fee that we pass on from the provider. This will increase approximately $72,000 in the sanitation fund to cover the increasing operational costs of the fund itself.
So, my question to you is how does this relate, just so everybody's on the same page, how does this relate to Item 8C in regards to the discussion and direction to the staff on the sanitation services when we're talking about direction regarding future contract negotiations, which is approving the changing the residential landfill cap usage from five tons, which is 10,000 pounds per month, and no trip limitations per residential account, down to two tons, which is 4,000 pounds per trip per residential account with an annual trip limitation of 18 trips per calendar year that can be used at any time? Moving on to that direction, I just want to make sure.
Yes, this has no relationship to that fee other than the future agenda item is a negotiation tool for the landfill fees. This is for your service, your weekly service, sanitation pickup.
Okay, so that's the one that's going out to negotiation bid?
Yes, and, yes, and Mr. Dudding will explain that in a future agenda item. This is just for the regular weekly sanitation pickup.
Okay, are we still putting that out to RFP, or are we still looking at...
That will be contingent upon the landfill. We are negotiating, or at least trying to do an RFP on that. We're considering all options, but this does not have any relation to that at this time because we have to go ahead and either leave it as it is and eat into fund balance, or go ahead and increase the fee. I don't see fees decreasing at all because of the gasoline prices. So we will probably not get a lesser fee than what we have right now. It's just contingent upon negotiations. I won't say that for a fact, but I'm almost certain of it.
Okay, and I guess the reason why I just assumed, like, when there was no motion on the floor was my, my perspective of it is I'd like to see what was brought forward and what we're voting on to see what the prices are really going to be prior to making a decision of what and how much we're gonna raise it.
Well, that's entirely up to council whether they want to do that or not. We'll be happy to bring it back at a later time, but it was our time of the year to bring these forward to council to be on the regular rotation of this fee. You're more than welcome to postpone it if you like.
Perfect, thank you. Counsel, are there any questions? Councilmember Cortez?
Are you thinking because we're changing the bulk, that it's going to change our overall pricing? Is that what you're...? Oh, okay.
No, I was looking at the entire package, like if it's going out to an RFP, seeing what somebody's going to be willing to bring forward for services, and then I didn't know if there was any connection between the two items, so I just wanted to clarify that.
So if we talk about those items later, and we decide that you want to do an RFP as a whole, then could we come back to this agenda item and change the discussion? Or should we just, I guess, what would be the best... Because to me, I think that, I guess, I would want to discuss the other item. I'd want to discuss all of them together.
Sure, that's entirely up to you, Council.
We can call forward the two agenda items out of order. That's in line. We can pause it and have that presentation conversation as well.
I will tell you that the landfill quote itself, or the RFP he has out right now, is not ready to go forward at this time. He's just presenting you the options so we can negotiate with the landfill people.
So then maybe we should just table the item until we have the RFP and everything done?
That's entirely up to you, Council.
I motion that we table Item 6A.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The second item is proclaiming April 2023 as Water Awareness Month in the town of Florence. So in a sense, the ongoing drought conditions in the Southwest have made promoting water conservation a whole lot easier in Arizona. Water Awareness Month helps to promote the importance of water and planned growth. Part of the effort to keep the public aware of the many ways that they can help conserve water, Arizona Water Awareness Month is an annual outreach campaign to spread the word about the value of conserving the Southwest's most precious natural resource, which is water. Water Awareness Month itself began in 2008 when the Arizona's governor signed an executive order that designated April as Water Awareness Month. The town will be holding a public open house on Monday, April 24th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM at the community center, and we'd love for you to be able to join us there. At this time, I'd like to invite council down with our Director of Community Development to receive this award, this proclamation. All right, the proclamation. Whereas water is one of Arizona's most vital and precious resources, as Arizona is an arid state, water is scarce, and population growth continues to increase our demand for water. And whereas Florence is committed, serving our current population as well as future growth as our demand for water, whereas all citizens and visitors should be encouraged to use water more efficiently, practicing a low-water-use lifestyle is a way each individual and business can help ensure a long-term sufficient water supply. And whereas creating a culture of conservation will greatly reduce the impact of drought on our natural resources, economy, and quality of life. And whereas water education is a cornerstone to any comprehensive water conservation program, and greater awareness of water issues can be gained through community education, action, and celebration. Therefore, I, Mayor Walter, Mayor of the town of Florence, to hereby proclaim April as Water Awareness Month and encourage all citizens and business owners to become more aware of their water use habits and determine where they can reasonably reduce water. Mr. Salas, would you like to say a few words?
As a whole, I think water is my absolute passion. It's the second most favorite thing I get to do in Florence, and so I have to thank Susan Jonas, our administrative assistant, for packaging most of this together and helping out. Our water superintendent put together some of these programs, working with Jeff. We appreciate his efforts to post these, and really look forward to our public outreach and having people come out and maybe ask questions or provide some, you know, programs that they think, whether it be a turf, low-water-usage toilets, all these different things. I can't, I just, like I said, look forward to working with the public here very soon.
Excellent.
I, I was kidding.
Item number seven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. A, Approval of the Special Use Agreement Amendment, number one, with the Florence Aero Modeller Club for use of the Florence Aero Modeller Park. B, Adoption of Resolution 1866-23, a resolution of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, certification of resolution and authorization for treasury management services and declaring an emergency. Item C is adoption of Resolution Number 1867-23, a resolution of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, authorizing the town to enter into a grant agreement with the City of Tucson Police Department regarding the Arizona High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. Item D, Authorization to enter into a grant agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security in amount of $232,769 for overtime wages, benefits, and vehicle mileage. Item E, Proclaiming naming April 2023 as Fair Housing Month by the mayor. Item F, Approval of the March 6th and 20th, 2023 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Item G, Receive and File the Following Board and Commission Minutes, January 25th, 2023 Historic District Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes, January 5th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda this evening. Is there any member of our public or our council that would like any item removed at this time?
I would like 7A, please.
Did you say 7A?
A.
Excellent, thank you. Go ahead and remove 7A at this time. Can I please have a motion of the consent agenda with removing Item A?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read with the removal of Item A.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Cortez?
So I didn't remove it for anything not happy. I just, I think that an item like this deserves a little bit more conversation and attention because it is a great partnership that we have, and so I would like to give them the opportunity to tell us the great things they do because I don't think everybody is aware of the different events that put on. I know the last time you were here, you talked about the improvements that you've made, and you're continuing to make improvements, and so I just want to celebrate the partnership with you and give you an opportunity to maybe tell the public a little bit more about what you're doing, how do you become a member, things like that. Because I actually did not realize until I was reading the agenda packet today that you had to be a member to participate at the park unless it's one of the public events. So I would love to have the public know how they participate outside of the public events and what type of things you are going to hold there.
Well, I didn't put my hearing aids in, so, but I got a gist of what you said. I'm Rusty Caldwell, president of Florence Aero Modellers. And I remember hearing how to, how to become a member. We have membership forms that you fill out and turn in to us or mail to our PO box with a $50 check. Right now, our annual dues are $50 a year. For $50, you can use that field anytime you want unless there's an event going on. And then, of course, if it's dark, it's really hard to fly a plane in the dark when you're not in the plane. We have done several things this past flying season, which is primarily November to end of March. Because, you know, I... So, we did an event in November that was open to the public, and I'll be darned if I can recall the name of it right now. You got me on the spot. Totally unprepared. We participated every year, we participate every year in the town Christmas parade with a float, with planes and cars on it, so that we can show the public that that's what goes on out there, is radio-controlled airplanes and cars. We do have a dirt track out there. It's only sized per se for one-tenth scale RC vehicles because the larger vehicles, eighth and larger, would get around here real quick. But, so there is a dirt track out there for RC car use. In January, we had, we actually did do a club-only event on January 1st as the New Year's Chili Feed, where we make a batch of chili and club members come out, and we have a good time, and we have a bunch of little mini contests and things like that. In February, we had IMAC, which is International Miniature Aerobatic Commission. But what those are, are those are the large radio-controlled planes. I'm talking 104 to 120-inch wingspans, 200cc engines, gasoline-driven, four-cylinder, two-cylinder engines, and they do precision maneuvers that a real plane can do. And so you get a chance to see what a real plane is capable of doing. You're not gonna see it out here with anything that flies around out here with a pilot in it, a real person, but like in Nevada and things, they do competitions like that. And then we, we had a warbird event. That's where the club members bring out their model warbirds, you know, your P-38s and T-28s and all your aircraft, military-style aircraft. And short, two weeks after that, we hosted the kids from the community center over here that were being taken care of over there during spring break. We had a bunch of them come out and actually learn how to fly an airplane or drive an RC car. And that was a great time, and so we appreciate that. And then we just had our end-of-the-season spring flyaway, where we're saying goodbye to our snowbirds, which makes up the majority of the club. I'd say there's only seven or eight of us that are full-timers. They're members of the club. Coming up, and toward beginning, the next flying season, which is this coming November, in October, October, November. In October, we will have the Florence RC Rodeo, which is gonna be three days of just, if it's got wings and a propeller, or a propeller and a rotor, or what, or wheels, if it's radio-controlled, bring it on out. You can fly it. We're gonna have fun. We're gonna have three days. We have a lot of participation from out-of-state guys, mostly California, Nevada, Texas, that actually come for this event, so that's why we put in a use permit for camping, so those people can stay right there at the field. Of course, it's dry camping, but, so, and then we'll do the parade again this year. So, any other questions? I don't know what else you would like to know. You do have to be a member of the AMA, the American Modeler Association, in order to fly an airplane out at our field because then you have the, you're covered by the blanket policy insurance, so...
I appreciate, I appreciate you giving us that information. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for approving the extension of our agreement.
It's coming up. We're getting ready to vote on it right now.
Okay.
As soon as Mr. Maldonado...
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for putting on the Pearl Harbor. I guess you got, are you guys doing that also this year?
Say that again.
December 7th. So you guys usually do the Pearl Harbor, flying out there?
December 7th, we haven't done anything on the 7th for three or four years now.
Okay.
We did a, three or four years ago, we did a Memorial Day thing.
Yeah.
But we end up with the, it's still pretty early in the season, and so not a whole lot of our club members are back.
Okay.
And so...
All right, thank you.
All right, at this time, we need a motion.
I make a motion. We approve Item 7A.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for being here this evening. Item 8, Unfinished Business. A is Ordinance Number 723-23, which is Discussion Approval Disapproval of an Ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, renaming Section 91 from Fire Department to the Fire and Medical Department effective May 1st, 2023.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As was discussed, this is the second reading of ordinance number 723-23. This was, the first reading was on March 20th, 20th, if you recall. And what we're asking for here is to change the town ordinance number 91.01, which would name the Fire Department as the Fire and Medical Department, and also strike items that are no longer applicable from Section B. Is there any questions?
Is there anybody who has any questions regarding this agenda item? Seeing none, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 8A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 8B is ordinance number 724-23. This is the first reading of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penalee County, Arizona, amending section 93-7E of the town code of the Town of Florence by providing revised restrictions for parking of recreational vehicles, boats, and trailers in residential areas, and repealing all other ordinances or parts of laws in conflict therewith, providing for severability and providing for an effective date of June 1st, 2023.
Good, okay. Say current. Current?
Current.
Good evening, Mayor Walter, Vice Mayor Mendoza, members of the town council. Just a little background on this item. In October of last year, the staff rewrote chapter 93 of the town code regarding nuisances and property maintenance. A complete rewrite and adopted, and the council adopted that in last year. The, one of the items in the, in that rewrite addressed parking of RVs on private property. And the, the current code, as it reads, provides for no, allows for parking of RVs, boats, trailers within the side yard of a lot, as well as in the rear yard, but not in the front yard as shown on this schematic that's overhead. And in, since that time, staff implemented this ordinance January 1 of 2023. And in February, at your February 21st meeting, the council had discussed this matter and determined that it may be somewhat burdensome to property owners. And at the time, in October, the staff may have misunderstood the direction of council that the council wished to have some encroachment of RVs within front yards and are presenting proposed ordinance back to the council for first reading that allows for an encroachment of a, of RVs in front yards. And let me see, yeah, the second one. That's it. Thank you. There you go. So the proposal this evening is, the thinking here was the typical RV, as I found, was roughly 30 to 35 feet, 33 is maybe the average RV. Of course, there's some larger, there's those that are smaller. The front yard setback of the zoning within the Florence proper, the historical area, is R16 and R2, which have the same setbacks of a 20-foot front yard setback. So there shouldn't be any structures within the front yard of the plane of the house to the property line. With that, the thought being was to allow for an 15-foot encroachment into the front yard, provided there's five feet from the front property line, which would be the same as the right-of-way line. There's also the right-of-way, which is from the back of curb or the sidewalk, there's roughly usually between, behind the back of the sidewalks, roughly five feet, give or take a few feet, depending on where, what street we're in. Some are much, much more generous, like Central and Willow. However, average-wise, it's about five feet. So roughly, you have about 10 feet from the back of the sidewalk to the beginning of a parked RV. In terms of safety, this shouldn't be a safety issue unless it's a corner lot and the RV somehow obstructs site visibility in a corner. And how the staff would handle that is there's a general provision in chapter 73 of the town code, which provides that if there's a parked vehicle that obstructs site visibility, cannot see the, the stop sign at a intersection, that we can enforce that provision. We believe that this, this could work. If the council doesn't feel that's appropriate, we could always move and make for a 10-foot setback from the front. But this is a beginning point, based upon the discussion the council had February 21st to allow certain amount of encroachment in the front yard. So since that meeting, the council, the mayor and council directed staff to hold in abeyance the enforcement of the current code, which we have, and come back to an, with an ordinance to allow a certain amount of encroachment in the front yard. So what you have before you is first reading of an ordinance, 724, for your consideration.
Opening this up to council? Questions and comments?
Sorry, can I go?
Go ahead.
So I had a, I had several people reach out to me and as we've gone back and forth, back and forth, this started back when Dan Hughes was the chief of police, is when this whole conversation started, trying to get people to stop utilizing the easements for parking and storage and to get people to start parking their RVs where they should be, on the side of their house or in their backyard or in RV storage. So for me, the concept that this is a new conversation, it's not. We've been having it for years now. But the question that has been asked to me by several is, we keep picking away at it, making it lenient and more lenient and more lenient. At what point are we just going to say, why are we making ordinances that we are not willing to enforce? So if we are going to continue to pick at an ordinance to try to make everybody happy, then we need to just not have an ordinance and let people park wherever they want to park and then just deal with that mess? Or we need to have an ordinance that has teeth? And so we, as council, need to decide, are we willing to back up our ordinances and say, this is it? And we're not going to continue to have this conversation? We're not going to continue to go back and forth? Because we can make a decision tonight and tomorrow, Billy Smith, as a generic name, could give me a call and say, I don't like it because my yard doesn't have that five feet. My yard only has four feet, so I need you to give me four feet. And then we come back and we keep having this conversation because people keep calling us and people keep reaching out. We have to decide what we're going to do so that we can stop having the conversation and stop trying to appease everybody. And I know that's not a popular thing to say and I'm going to get a lot of pushback from that, but I personally am tired of talking about it because we made a decision and then we pulled back. We have to make a decision and we have to stick with it, or we have to just stop having the conversation and let people park wherever they want to park because we're not going to make everybody happy. With what's sitting in front of me, I'm perfectly fine that, with that. I would prefer the RV to have to be back a little bit further, but I'm not going to continue to push it with what it is, the five feet. I'm fine with that, but we have to stick to what we're going to say and we have to allow our departments to enforce it. And then we also have to remember, who's going to go out and measure five feet? Who's going to go out and say, that's, that's only four feet or that's three feet? Who's going to do it? And are we going to back them up when they do it? Because we've already had officers that, when they have tried to enforce our code, that have been ridiculed and they've been cussed out and they've been threatened with their jobs and things like that. So we need to back up what we're going to put out there for our officers and our code enforcement to do. And that's kind of where I'm at today on this one.
I'm just open for anybody who wants to talk.
If anybody else wants to jump in, I'm just, wanted to echo the same sentiments that I personally think that the five-feet setback is not quite enough, but I won't dig in because I don't want to have that fight. I don't feel that that's something that is worth fighting about at this point. Because if we're just going to keep shuffling it around, I'd rather not nitpick about five feet. So, but to me, I just want to clean up the facade of, of the homes, have a beautiful community to where we're proud of it, and I don't want to have constant back and forth about what is allowed and what isn't allowed down to any degree of detail like that. So to me, this is sufficient, at least to get sort of the point across. I'm hoping that we have staff that is willing to back it up and that they know that council will back them and that when we get those phone calls, that we'll handle it with grace and, but also with firmness. So that's just where I'm at as well.
So I also agree. I think that five-foot setback is, because everybody has different style of property. Here, it's not cookie cutter, it's not a subdivision-type area around here. So somebody else's setback, you may think you know where your setback is, but unless you've actually pulled your property, like you really don't know where your setback is until you see it on, on your plan. So I think a five-foot setback, and I think it kind of protrudes from the house a lot, in my own opinion, but I do understand that not everybody has a backyard, depending on how far back their house sits. I don't think we're going to make everybody happy. It's impossible and I'm not, I'm not looking to. I just, I agree that, you know, I would like things to be cleaned up. I think there's a lot more than just RVs that we need to work on. Somebody owning an RV that's in good condition and stuff is not my top priority right now when there's a lot more things going on in certain areas of our town. But I do agree that I feel like a five-foot setback is not a lot. So that's just my input.
Would anybody else like to speak or have any comments at this time? All right, seeing none. This is unfinished business. This is the first reading of that ordinance and it is not set for any action at this evening's meeting. So thank you very much.
Okay.
I would like to point out to staff again that the agenda item in our packet says it's an action item.
Oh, so whoever wrote the item?
We keep having this happen, so if we could make sure that these are being tagged correctly, please?
So when I go and I read where it says 8B, typically such as where it says 8A, it says discussion slash approval slash disapproval of an ordinance. On item 8B, it does not state discussion approval, discussion slash approval slash disapproval. To see that, I actually have to go on to the council action form. But if I'm simply just reading it from here in the agenda, the way that it is, it doesn't show it consistently. So just in the future, can you add it to that item B?
So item B says ordinance number 724, first reading of an ordinance. But I do apologize because the little check mark on the box was clicked and it was not removed. I apologize. We'll be more consistent on that.
Should we have an action item on it this evening or not?
No, it's first reading. Your code requires two readings on every item of the code.
Thank you for that clarity. Item C, discussion and direction to staff on sanitation services. Mr. Carl Dudding, he's going to give us direction regarding future contract negotiations.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This item came to you in February. We came to you requesting moving the landfill services to a pay-as-you-go model. Council was not in favor of that model. But we continued during that time to discuss limitations on trips per year and caps on tonnage per trip. We discussed, council discussed going from 12 to 20 trips per year with ton ranging from one to three tons per trip. Council requested that, we did some analysis on the various weight tiers by the users. Council requested anticipated cost savings based on limiting trip usages. And council also requested that public information campaign start advising customers that, when appropriate, consolidate your trip loads to the landfill because we're getting eaten up by the minimum charges. And so in the RCA, I broke down on page two, the, the weight groupings by trip. And you'll see from zero to 99 tons, we had 3,200 trips. And that represents 95% of the users. When you take in the next range of one to two tons, those two account for 99% of our landfill users. The remaining is 32 users that in FY, or in calendar year 2022, took loads to the landfill over two tons. So based on those analysis and council's discussion at the last meeting, staff is recommending setting caps on the landfill at 18 trips per year with a two-ton per trip. In addition to the 18 caps, residential customers can seek a five-day waiver to accommodate any remodeling that might be done with an active building permit. And this is in addition to the 18 trips. So we're proposing 18 trips plus five days of unlimited use for remodeling. At that meeting, we proposed three new fees, a late fee of $5 per account. Council will split on that. It's pretty 50/50, I believe. So we're not making any recommendation on that. At that meeting, council appeared to be in favor of the establishment fee of $20. Currently, we were charging a $20 establishment fee on water and trash customers, but trash customers are not paying that fee for the same account setup and establishment. So we think it's fair that that should be added to, to new customers only. And also, we're requesting temp hold fee of $30 to cover the costs, the overhead cost. When our seasonal customers leave and put their service on hold, customers that are here have to burden the overhead cost. And so this is just to help offset rising costs that's happening in sanitation. And I did want to point, because you, you brought it up during the rate increase, the landfill is an active RFP. We are negotiating and tomorrow, based on council's recommendation, regardless of what it is, we hope to finalize that and bring it back to the next meeting. And it was mentioned, the 1908 that we pay every month, that does include coverage for landfill, both trash pickup and weekly services. So another note, we had to bump our landfill budget up 50,000 about three weeks ago just because of rising costs and rising usage, you know, inflation's there. So, so tonight, we're seeking approval to advertise the temp hold, to advertise the establishment fee for 60 days and bring that back for public area and possible adoption, as well as council's recommendation on any caps at the landfill.
I did have one suggestion upon reading the agenda item. Where it states, and we had this conversation, and I thought that we were all in agreeance, so reading it this way had me a little bit perplexed. The last sentence of 8C states, customers... The last sentence of eight C states, customers need, customers that needed landfill services more than the approved annual cap may seek a five-day waiver at town hall for residents with active building permits. I'm recalling the discussion that was held that evening, and we did talk about how we do have many residents that facilitate projects within their home that do not require, um, an active building permit. So, that part, I would like to make the suggestion of removing with active building permits.
Absolutely, not a problem.
Is there anybody else that has questions, comments? Councilmember Larson?
Um, I actually have two, or one question and definitely a suggestion. So, um, with the temporary hold service, does their service automatically start back up after six months, or is that something that they still ha, have to activate when they return?
Um, most of the time when they leave, they give us a start date. Um, but if it, if they don't give us one, it will, we anticipate it automatically starting after six months, not to defeat the purpose of the hold.
So, my question concern is that as a consumer, if it's gonna cost me twenty dollars to just come back and reestablish at that point versus thirty dollars, I'm gonna choose to disconnect and reconnect versus paying the extra ten dollars for just a temporary hold for six months. So, either we need to foot flop those fees or we need to make them match. I don't care if it's at twenty or if it's at thirty, or we need to have some reason or benefit that it would have for the consumer to do a hold versus a, um, stop and restart. Cuz if it costs the same amount of man-hours and ultimately you're still having the weight of the burden on the system, then what does it matter to, it should cost hypothetically the same.
Same, yeah, cuz they'll pick that over the other, yeah. Yeah, we can make that change.
Yeah, I mean, maybe you meet him in the middle and it's twenty-five.
Okay. Well, currently, our, our water and trash customers pay a twenty-dollar stash, establishment fee, so.
So, then both twenty?
Twenty, keep it consistent.
Yes.
Are there any other questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Neil?
I thought we were speaking in favor of getting rid of the hold the last time we discussed it.
Well, we, we proposed turning the landfill as a pay as you go, where, um, it wouldn't be in your monthly bill. But when you went to the landfill, you paid.
I'm sorry, I'm speaking of the residents to hold on their garbage and stuff for snowbirds that leave and put a hold. I thought we were, I thought it was brought up in the discussion to totally get rid of that.
To, to, um, yes, to not allow them, yes.
Yes, not allow them to do that because the rest, everybody else has to pick up the fees on that.
Exactly, and, uh.
Getting that out of there.
It seemed, and I don't wanna speak for council, but it seemed, the majority of council was not in favor of that. And if I read that wrong, um, we can discuss that, you know? A lot of municipalities are moving to, um, you can't put your trash on hold because it creates a burden for everybody else.
Yeah.
And our water is the same way. You, you have to pay your water base regardless if you get water, just, it's just to keep the service down for everybody is the goal.
So, the residents shouldn't be picking up the slack for somebody up in the White Mountains for the summer, cuz I know I would love to be up there with them.
So, there, and there is a carrying cost that everybody picks up.
Council, you're more than welcome to change that on the floor if you like.
So, along with what, um, Snake is saying, so in my mind, and because I, I, I just, there are people that leave, they use their houses, and, um, they have guests that are here while they're not here, and they still utilize the trash even though their trash service has been stopped, because if the trash can is put out, the trash man picks it up. So, it doesn't matter if they've frozen, the, the trash guy does not have the time to look at every address before he picks up. So, it's kinda like along with our code enforcement, why do something that is going to make someone else's job more difficult if we're not willing to stand behind it? I would prefer to not allow people to put their trash on hold because I know there are people that still, their trash cans are being put out because they have, um, visitors that stay at their house while they're not here, their Airbnbs or whatever. So, I'm with Snake, I a hundred percent would agree to not allow a hold on trash services because it, it, it's easy to manipulate, put a hold on it, but there's still trash being picked up. And there's neighbors using other neighbors' trash cans, and so then it looks like that house is using their trash when they've just allowed a neighbor to use their trash cans. Our trash guy's still picking up the same amount of trash, so.
Right, they're driving down the street, it, it'd take longer, like you said, to stop and pick it up. And we, since we don't have water in Anthem, that's where we have the problem. Um, people putting their service on hold and, you know, we're, we're finding them, they'll call in for bulk trash pickup, and we're like, you had your service on hold for twelve months, you know? Oh, you know, so, uh, most of the time, they bring their account up to date, you know? But it, it is a problem. Um, and, uh, you know, when, when you have water tied to a, a bill, it's easy to, um, force the hand. And, and also, they, if we try to pick up the trash cans in Anthem, you know, they're in the, they're in the garage, we have a hard time picking up cans for non-payment, so. That, that was, um, staff's recommendation is to remove this temp hold, um, allowance. Um, and if council is in favor of that, um, we would move forward with the code change.
I have a question. Councilmember Butchala, uh, did you have something?
Yeah, I did. Um, so if we lower the cost of the hold on the water to twenty, and we put the cost of the trash to twenty now, I mean, how much does it really impact us when somebody puts it on? I mean, are we really getting anything from doing this because we're lowering one ten dollars?
Well, we're trying, the twenty dollars, the, uh, temporary hold fee.
Yeah.
Is to try to help offset the lost revenue while that person is gone.
How much average would it cost for, how much would we absorb as residents that are still here utilizing it for the person that put it on hold? Like, how much would an average household impact that?
I did calculate that, and I, I wanna say it's about a dollar or something.
And it, it's, it's something that we can, I mean, we're not.
Yeah, it is a significant cost.
Yeah.
Because staff stays the same.
Yeah.
You know, you have twenty percent of your base leaves, the other eighty percent have to cover, it's built into the cost.
Yeah. So, I mean, that twenty dollars will offset it that much, but it's not covering nearly what it costs to do that, right?
Right, and, and the goal would be if, if that was instituted, um, rate increases, you wouldn't have, you know, we could hopefully offset future rate increases because we have a, um, spread across the base, yeah.
Would you be able to get us that information before the next, um, time that you come in front of us with this? Cuz you have how many more readings? This is?
Um, so tonight, the, uh, the most important thing to take away tonight is, uh, council direction on landfill caps, um, cuz we have an RFP out on the street, we have two contractors that we're working with. We told these contractors that there might be some cap changes, and would they hold their pricing, um, firm? They, they held, um, so we have twenty more days, but we would like to get that finalized this week. So, that shouldn't have any impact on, uh, council's decision to remove temp. So, I can get that information, I'll probably have it tonight in an hour. I, I know I calculated that. Becky, do you recall that, Becky off the top of your head?
No, but, um, what we would do is we would take our rate table summaries on a monthly basis. What we can do on that is project out, we have a, a large clientele of senior citizens that, uh, transitional, we call them transitional customers. We can project out what that amount of difference between what we're doing consistently versus when the, when it dips down like that. So, we would be able to tell you what our estimated loss of revenue is at that point in time for, I would say, at least six months as our consistent amount.
Thank you. But couldn't you, sorry, just to add on to that, couldn't you, so you'll see the, the amount of revenue that we're losing out for these holds that we currently do, but then can you compute in how much, if you got twenty bucks per month for all of those consumers?
Yes.
We would've made up, so that's what you're gonna bring to us, correct?
Yes, that's what we're gonna do.
Okay, just wanna make sure we're talking the same numbers.
One more.
Okay, go ahead.
So, just to be clear, when they put their services on hold, neighbors, the rest of Florence have to pick up the cost for that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's built into the rate itself, that loss of revenue.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
The costs remain the same, except for, you know, your, your, uh, pickup costs do dip a little bit whenever they're gone, but the other costs, the consistent cost of operations, maintenance, your, um, minimal staff that we have in there remain the same.
Yeah, I just don't wanna make sure that nobody's picking up the slack for anybody else, that's my biggest thing.
So, I do have an agreeance, and it sounds like we're asking you to strike approving, advertising new temporary hold fees because we do not want to burden the entire system with that hold fee. So, we want to strike that through. Everybody's in agreeance?
No, I'm hearing different things down there, though. Is that what you guys were saying as well? Because I'm hearing, I'm hearing some confliction as to what everyone's direction is. Cuz it seems like they wanna cancel, not do the hold fee, and then they're talking about they wanted the calculation for what the burden would be on the system.
Do you wanna do away with the hold fee?
Yeah, it's nothing about no calculation.
I don't, no, I, I asked about calculation, but I asked because if, if we're gonna lower one, you know, and then bring one up, are we, is it really impacting how much it would hit? I know it will a little bit, but I just kinda wanted to know for my information, like, how much does one person putting their fees on hold, you know, affect us? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Certainly.
It was just that.
We'll be happy to do that. I think also, we need to utilize our current budget, uh, what that's costing us, including the landfill estimates that we're coming in with because they are significantly higher than they were before, so we need to include those and just do a little analysis. Carl and I will take care of that for you.
So, is that, is that number, um, a factor in determining of removing temporary hold as a service?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay.
Like, just striking the entire line is what I'm hearing from our council.
So, council's recommending that we change code, and we would have to bring it back to you, that we are gonna remove the temporary hold option?
No longer doing the temporary hold option is what I'm hearing from all of our council members.
Okay, okay, yep.
Um, the other item that I did not speak about that I did wanna bring up, and this is again from our discussion last time, we're talking about usage, where it goes from five tons, ten thousand pounds, and no trip limitations to two tons with an annual trip limitation of eighteen. Um, when it comes down to it, I can recall our conversation, and I ran some numbers afterwards, and the conversation from the last presentation of the agenda item had to do with people making trips to the dump that really didn't meet the amount of, um, pounds that where they were dropping off, like, they would go unlimited as many times as they wanted, just dropping off a couple bags of garbage here and there. So, that's where I do appreciate putting the cap where it says eighteen trips. What I would like to do is I would like to leave the five tons, ten thousand pounds in place, and the reason for that is people that are doing different types of projects or if they're, whatever reason, in their home, I don't see from your presentation last time that that was the problem, was the amount that they were dropping off? It was really the frequency that they were dropping off, just a few items here and there.
Correct, uh, then the thought was, let's tighten it while we can.
So, I just figured.
Ninety-nine percent is?
I just figured, leave the tonnage as five tons, ten thousand pounds, but I do see value in adding, um, eighteen trips per calendar year versus no trip limitations. At least it does give that, like, a little tightness to it.
And.
And that's gonna do away with what you were talking about, where people that may have businesses or out-of-town friends, like, they're not utilizing the services inappropriately, and it's meant for what it's meant for, which is for our citizens.
And the five-day waiver will take out the building permit?
Correct.
Okay.
I think that we also had talked about making sure that we did, um, a really good job educating on, when, when all you take is a tiny little load, it's costing us more than if you would actually take a big load and try to encourage people to, hey, get with your neighbor, and why don't you guys all get together, fill the truck or fill the trailer or whatever and do a load? So, I think if we just remember to just keep educating the public about how expensive it is for us to only drop off a tiny underweight load versus it's, we get our money's worth if you take a lot.
Yeah, and we can put a public service message in the.
In the bills and stuff when they go out, yeah.
And maybe on Facebook, but, you know, you know, when you can consolidate, you know, do it.
And then it says something about a five-dollar late fee. I think that's the only thing we haven't, um, talked about, the five-dollar late fee. Somewhere in here, I read that.
So.
I don't see the five-dollar late fee.
Yeah, last time we discussed a five-dollar late fee and, uh, council was split.
Cuz it says the vote of yes would mean removal landfill services, I'm just reading off of what the agenda says. It just says, on the vote part, it mentions implement a five-dollar month late fee on utility bills that show a past due balance. So, I just wanna make sure we talk about it because it's on that little, the last page where it says if we were to vote yes.
If council's in favor of that, I mean, that late fee could, if the, someone is in favor, it could be a dollar. We, we just threw five dollars out there. The goal was to try to get people to, um, move towards online bill pay, um, just to help reduce the cost of collecting. It's not a moneymaker, but it's just a, you know, hey, save a buck or save five dollars.
I don't like the five because that's about a.
Twenty-five percent of the.
Yeah.
Bill. But e, even a dollar, my, uh, curb behavior if.
But also, I wonder how off, how much staffing this is now gonna take to then implement putting this on every bill or collecting this from bills that have now sat stagnant, tracing out five dollars.
We wouldn't proactively, and it would take nine, ninety days to even, um, implement that, but our computer system can do that, um, automatically, so.
I think last time we talked about it, there was a comment made that typically if somebody is behind on their bill, and then we're now adding additional fees, it's gonna, because we do have quite a few people that are on very tight budgets and with the economy and everything going up, I mean, shoot, I'm struggling to figure out some stuff, so, I mean, if you wanna charge me five dollars, go ahead, I may not pay it on time, but I'll pay it. But so, I just, I just remember, we did talk about this last time, and that's why I wanted to make sure we talked about it again, cuz it was kinda hidden in here, that, um, there was some concern about what are we really gaining out of charging someone who's already struggling five dollars? I mean, if you're, if you're late just cuz you forgot to pay it, which is sometimes my problem too, that's one thing, but if I'm late because I can't afford the bill, you charging me five dollars every month until I pay it or whatever is gonna make it harder for me to pay that bill. So, I, I appreciate and I understand why we're trying to do it, but I'm also thinking, uh, you know, we're penalizing somebody who's already struggling, maybe in re, instead, we could incentivize someone to, um, go to online payments, or hey, if you pay your bill fifteen days before it's due, you save five dollars, like.
Yeah, we discussed that, but those incentives would be spread across everybody else. Everybody else would have to, you know, pay for that.
I like that it's to make the final cut and it's not on here, so that's why I'm like, let's just.
Yes, staff's, staff's updated recommendation does not include a late fee.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you.
It was in the notes from the last one.
Yet again, why I'm trying to clarify, because what one part says and what the last part says, I'm looking at it right here on line. It says, a vote of yes would include that five-dollar fee.
If I can explain, I thought I was helping you, and apparently I made life more difficult by helping. Um, April third, two thousand and twenty-three agenda does not have the five-dollar fee, but where you see background, we went ahead and included the entire February sixth. So, when you go back to back, you'll see the first page is April third, second page, April third, third page, April third, fourth page is April third, and then when you get to the fifth page, you will see that that is the exact presentation with your white paper.
And then when you get to the fifth page, you will see that that is the exact presentation with your white paper and your PowerPoint presentation. We just wanted you to have the materials so that you would be able to see that we made those changes.
I don't know what you're talking about, because I'm looking at, so I pull the, I have a hard agenda in front of me, and I pull the agenda packet, and I pull the agenda. I am looking at page three or four, nine G, page one.
We're on, we're on eight C, so that, that's the background information. If you keep scrolling up, go ahead, keep scrolling up.
Okay, 'cause I'm like, I...
What about page one twenty-five?
On, on tonight's agenda, we did mention the five, the, the five-dollar late fee. We, we did mention, and we, our assumption was that council was not in favor of that.
So, yeah, in the future, let's not include the action pages from a previous agenda, because I'm looking at nine G, because that's the agenda item that I pulled up in my packet. Lisa, you're making me look like a fool up here. I'm just letting you know that.
I was trying to help, I apologize.
All right, so to streamline, we're on eight C, and we are going to remove that tonnage limitation to keep it the way that it was, remove the active building permit, strike line two, there will be no temporary holds, and that's it. Do you need any other clarifications?
And the twenty-dollar establishment fee is...
We can leave the twenty-dollar establishment fee.
And no late fee?
No late fee.
No late fee.
Done?
Done.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you need a motion for that?
Nope, just discussion and direction. Direction has been given.
Oh, don't check that action box.
Thank you.
Item nine is new business. Discussion and direction on council projects to add for consideration for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Town Council, we have compiled your identified budget items and are asking council if you have any further for consideration in the budget, or do you want any removed?
You have questions, Councilmember Bushalado?
I did.
Go ahead.
About the skate park one.
Go ahead.
That, where would the location of that exactly be?
I don't believe a location has been determined at this time.
Yes.
Or proposed. Am I speaking out of turn?
Okay. Okay, I didn't either. Thank you.
Yeah, I had a question. Is Tony Hawk himself in a building and stand there and teach people how to skate for eight hundred grand?
Yeah, I'd like to know where they got the estimate from.
That's crazy.
Because that estimate is a little inflated.
I want Tony Hawk there, sleeping there, living there. For eight hundred grand for a skate park, he better have his behind there.
So I don't know if, oh, sorry, I just wanted to respond to that real quick, too, and let you know that there's actually quite a few grants that I've found where they will, as long as we have community support, and Ally knows, I've sent them to her, where as long as we have community support, they will help us with this design, they will help us with funding, they will help us with a lot of different aspects of getting the goal accomplished. So again, I don't know where these numbers came from, I don't know if that was even factored into it at the point, at that point, but that's a whole other, other beast to take on, but, yeah.
I did look up the average, because the skate park here in town is actually one that was put in when I was in high school, and we rallied for it, and we had to raise money, and then the town met us halfway. And so the skate park has been here for some time. I think it's been redone a couple times, like touched up, and a couple new things put in here and there. But it's basically the original one from, like, ninety-six. I did look up how much a state-of-the-art skate park, they're normally fifty to seventy-five dollars a square foot to build, and they're normally, like, a, a good size one for a town this size is anywhere from six to eight thousand square feet. And a huge one for, like, a more larger vicinity to, to hold twenty-five thousand people annually is about twelve thousand square feet, and at the max, state-of-the-art, top-of-the-line, everything, it came up to four hundred thousand. So I think that number, when I saw it, I'm not gonna lie, like, I'm all for getting kids doing activities, but eight hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money for, I mean, I don't know how much of the population even skates anymore. I know when we were growing up, it was the thing. And I, I do see kids over here, my, my son plays basketball at the park almost every night. There's a group of kids playing basketball, and there's a group of skateboarders there. I just don't know if there would be that many to be able to justify eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, and I think that that number was based off of other factors, and I think that there, I'm certainly open to be there, that's rehabilitation. I think it sort of goes back to the same mentality of the rodeo grounds. What we have is not up to par with what we believe our community deserves. And so whether that looks like redoing where it's currently at, or whether it looks at a new location, or what the scope of that work looks like, I think is all up for discussion. And like I said, I've already been researching quite a few grants and opportunities for us to have other funding sources, so that this wouldn't be just a burden on us, and there is some options available, so certainly open to those. I think that's just more of a placeholder for that amount, and it certainly doesn't even need to be that amount, once we get into it a little bit further, so.
I do want council to understand that the skate park that we have is not even listed in our asset files, because it was a ten, supposedly a temporary structure for the kids. So when you're talking about a skate park, a concrete skate park, which Ally did research on, and she's the one that got the estimated pricing, I just bumped it up a little bit because of the circumstances in the world right now, and the problem we have getting supplies and things like that. So this is just an estimated number, so that you're aware that it could possibly cost this much. But she has a scope and everything. Ally, did you wanna speak on it?
Yes, I got the information from Fountain Hills, and they recently did a skate park over there, rebuilt their skate park with the pump track and everything, so kinda took those numbers, and Becky helped to increase it just a little bit, rather have a higher number than lower number, and come back and say, we need more money, so that's, that's where the numbers came from.
I'm really not in a bad mood. So, I, I think history will remind us all how much we hate to see inflated numbers, and the reason why we hate to see inflated numbers is because we almost tore down a building because of an inflated number. We almost didn't do the rodeo grounds and turn tail on that and refocus on it because of inflated numbers. We will never compare to Fountain Hills and their budget. So, yeah, I'm sure their park is fabulous, and I'm sure it cost them quite a lot of money, but so did some of the rodeo grounds that we've looked at. Queen Creek's rodeo ground cost them a ton of money, and they have themselves said that they, there are many things that they would do differently because they wasted money on certain things that they didn't need. So, I don't like comparing ourselves to a community that we will never compare ourselves to, because Fountain Hills is a completely different beast than the town of Florence is. We're gonna be fabulous in different ways. So, eight hundred thousand dollars, if that is double what someone else, what Councilwoman Kristen is saying up here, that, that's too much of inflation. I get that prices are changing, but that makes it scary for us to say, oh, yeah, let's get behind that. I'm looking at the multi, multi-generational center, and I'm about having a heart attack over here, and I'm trying to think, what the heck are we building? And what is it gonna offer that we can justify that expense? And now I'm thinking, well, how much of that is an inflation and not an actual price? So I, I get what you're trying to do, but it freaks us, it freaks the public out. It makes it hard to get the public to back a project if everybody's saying, oh, it's gonna cost us eight hundred thousand dollars. The Quinn building did not cost anywhere near what we thought it was going to cost to rehab, and we almost tore it down, and thankfully, someone stepped in and said, hey, we're willing to foot the bill, and they did it for a fraction of the cost that we had been told it would cost us to repair it. So ju- just to, you know, caution in the future to try to state, you know, I get an inflation ten percent or something, you know, whatever it is, but let us know that and just say, you know, that that's in there. And then, for me, I'm just wondering when we're gonna start to get some numbers on the Silver King, because I've been asking for it for quite some time, so just wondering when that project's gonna have a number, because that's gonna, that too is going to be not a small number, so.
And hopefully, the Heritage Foundation through the state is going to have some funding and grants that will be able to assist us with that endeavor.
They will, but the, from what I'm understanding, from what I hear from HDAC and those that deal with those funds a lot, we, again, are behind the ball, and so those monies are being eaten up. And so the longer we sit and take to come up with these prices, or decide if we're going to do these projects that we can utilize the, those funds, the less we have. We need to get ahead of the projects from now on, and we need to, to know ahead of times. And even if we don't have the project ready, or, or we're not fully decided, if you know there's a grant out there, let's get a, get going on applying for it, so that as we're doing that, we can be finalizing the project, and then if the grant comes through, then we can do it, or we at least have our foot ahead of it. But, yeah, that one, it's gonna disappear fast, because it's not a lot of money. When you look at what restoration of historic buildings costs, it is not a lot of money, and we're competing with a lot of other areas that are in desperate need of it as well, so.
Councilmember Neil?
Two things. One thing about the skate park, the one thing we have to think about, if you have Florence, you have Anthem. That's multiple skate parks. Or just leave the skate park here in Florence, we gotta think about a skate park in Anthem, doing that. The community center or multi-generation center is something, I mean, you go out to Anthem, and you guys got that big YMCA, and it's, and as everybody tells us, it's HOA money. Florence has nothing, there's nothing for our kids to do. I think that's a little low, actually, on that budget, because it's desperately needed in Florence, horribly needed in Florence. We can't go to your YMCA unless we get invited by somebody. And I just, it's supposed to one town, but it's not. So, that's something to think about, what Florence desperately needs in that building, because it's, I think it gets served every purpose in town.
Can I share real quick my, and this is, feasibility of this might be completely null and void. So this is my ideal Kristen world, okay? I am firm believer that town of Florence needs something that is not HOA, whether some type of event center, some type of, like what we have up in Anthem, not debating that at all. But I also feel that there is no services north of the river that the town of Florence really gets involved with, and that's not just us, that's also five parks. So, just trying to bring everyone together, what I would love is where F Mountain Post and Butte, we're already working on that preserve, this is, again, my vision, I'm not speaking for anybody else, is that we could, I know we've got some issues when it comes to the railroad and other things along there, but I would love to build up some of that area to where we could have the skate park, where we could have the recreational facility, to where everybody has some way to get there, and it's in the middle. It's the unifier between everybody, so where you have the recreational facility, the skate park, the hiking, the biking, the trails, the quads, you could have all of that sort of centralized. And I think that as our community grows, and we start to fill in some of those gaps, I think it allows the opportunity for, for us to come together at that central location. Again, I know that there's a lot of obstacles to get there, but that's sort of what I have it.
Yeah, we're also talking about buildings that we're probably fifteen, twenty-year off.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've got a lot of things to overcome with that.
We have kids in town now that need this. We have seniors in town now that need this, people in town now that need...
I completely agree, but if we keep using that mentality, that it's always fifteen, twenty years off, we're never gonna get there, because then we're gonna build one here, we're gonna build one there, and we're gonna keep staying separated. We have to do, that's why I'm saying I'm open to doing something down here, but if we're gonna look at the grand scheme of things, and we do have to start planning, we do have to start moving on some of this stuff. We can't just, where's Post and Butte? We haven't done, that's been in the talks for how many years? And we're still running those circles. If we could get even a parking lot out there, if we could get some type of roadways out there, we could start with some of this stuff, but we've been, I've been in council for six years, and we aren't, we aren't doing anything. We haven't moved.
I think everything you're, you're mentioning is exactly what is in the plan for Territory Square, which is set to be done in thirty years. I've looked at the whole plan for that. Me and Mo actually went and met with Lisa to look at the whole plan, and that is the unifier, but that's not happening anytime soon. We have to build up a whole riverbed. We have to do a lot of things, and that isn't something that's gonna happen when our children are still children, and when our children probably have children.
Yeah.
Let's just be real about it. But that's gonna be the one unifier, it's just gonna take a lot for that to happen, and a lot of planning. All major events in town are done in this part of town, and everybody comes to this part of town. And until there's things out there where everybody can attend, that will always be a separator. Like, we, you know what I mean, like, the people that live on, on, on this part of town that don't have the subdivision and don't have the HOA, they can't just go and attend things at your guys' facilities, you know, in Anthem. So, they're neat, I do agree, like, it doesn't matter to me where you, where you put it, like, I'm sorry, where you put it. You guys already have community centers, and they're amazing, but it, not everybody can go. But when there's huge events in town, and there's car shows, and there's Christmas, and there's this, and there's that, the u, the resources here are utilized to max, but it's not vice versa, and it never will be, because of, you know, that being an HOA, and mo- most of them funding things. And that's why Territory Square is so important, because it is gonna bridge that gap.
Yeah.
Have you spoken yet, councilman?
Yeah, I was just letting you know.
Have you spoken yet, councilmember? Okay, go ahead.
All right, um, first of all, Territory Square, that's a great thing, and, um, I know I had talked to Russ a little bit on Friday. With our, our plans the way they are, we have to try to, the reason why sometimes things take so long is because we don't, we wanna build something, we don't wanna have to tear it down to, to bring something else in, we want everything to kind of tie in. So everything has to be methodical, if that makes sense. So that's, sometimes I know that's the answer, don't, nobody wants to hear, but, yeah, stuff like that is gonna take time. But like I said, I think now is the time to, you know, carpet DMC is the moment, and kinda get those things rolling that they've been sitting around collecting dust for years. So, I'm, I'm very enthusiastic, now that we got Russ. Second of all, is, um, I was wondering to see if we could add on one of the projects here, and I know we had talked to Madam Mayor about, uh, the cemetery. I, I didn't see that on here, so if that was something that we could, we could add on there, on trying to somehow bring the cemetery up to what its current condition is. So, anybody else up here feel that same way? I know we had talked about it previously.
I do, yeah.
Okay.
Was that previously a CIP item in the past, or was there, was there something about that?
We've got some improvements that Allison is proposing for the cemetery. Ally, do you wanna speak on that a little bit?
We were talking about a work session.
They're, they're not approved yet, but she's proposing them.
A couple of the items for the cemetery that we're, we included is automatic gates, so that when the public pulls up, it'll be set from dusk to dawn. They can enter at any time between those hours, and then as people are leaving, they can just exit at any time. So, the, the gate will allow people to enter, but then, I'm sorry, won't allow people to enter past dusk, and then it will allow them to exit at any point in time while they're in the cemetery. And I, I know we have a project coming up here, April twenty-first, which you all should have received an email on for our Arbor Day activities. We're gonna be planting trees along the entryway of the cemetery. And I believe that was all that I included this year for, or this next year for the cemetery. Also in that is hopefully having some more staffing on site to be able to assist with the cleanup out there daily. The immigration crew, the inmate labor used to go out there daily and clean up, and so now our parks guys are picking up that, and they're going out there, they spend most of their Mondays out there. But hopefully, we can have a staff member there Monday through Friday.
I have something to say to Ally real quick.
Thank you.
Ally, I just wanted to say that it is being noticed that they are cleaning up those piles that were out there before, and, like, your guys' work is not going unnoticed. People are noticing, and I have received feedback that it is looking good out there, and that the piles are gone by Monday, and everybody's happy about that. So I'll just, just to that.
I, I wanna add also that we do have a lot of volunteers within the community who have been very helpful. I know there's people out there daily who are cleaning up, so we appreciate all of their help as well.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I'm looking at the items that are for carryover from last year, and I'm like, I'm kind of disappointed that we can't afford eight stop signs with lights. It's been almost a year. Those stop signs have been requested on Merle Ranch so that we can stop some of the accidents that are going on. And then I don't know how the stop signs are just slightly under the cost of, I think it was three electronic outdoor signs that would have been probably a little more than, I don't see how the prices on that would have been so close. Um, I think when I priced out the stop signs, it came out to about $8,000. I'm sure there's a little bit of inflation, but not doubled. Um, so I'm kind of concerned that with the projects that we're looking forward to, how long is that going to take if you can't get eight stop signs on a road? So, yeah, that's all I've got.
All right, so I have a few things I just want to share. In looking at the list that was provided, Territory Square, we understand that it is strategic planning over time, it's taking time, it's building up. I'd like to see us continue to be setting aside funding to make that a reality, because in the past, I have seen where we have plans and then they kind of sit on a shelf for a while, they get defunded, a new shiny object comes and we pivot, and then eventually we come back, but I just want to make sure that we're staying on that path. Another councilmember mentioned earlier about our Post and Butte Preserve project. I don't see that in here on our plan, but that's definitely something that we want to continue building on as well. Now, we know that funding is limited and you're asking us to prioritize, and I think that that's very important as well. All of us have heard from constituents both in Five Parks, Florence proper, and Anthem regarding a multi-generational center, because it does serve all of our populations, and it would also be a way to streamline and bring together some of our youth, our seniors, and some of those activities. When I hear councilmember Neal had spoke earlier about, you know, with comparing the different facilities between downtown Florence and Anthem, I can recall when we built the aquatics center. The one thing that I pushed for when I was on council, and I'm still very deflated that it didn't happen, because I think it would have been amazing for our community, was a lazy river. Because I'll tell you, I drive an hour and I will stay somewhere just so I can float in their dang lazy river, because that is relaxing. But neither the point, it's too late to bring that there now. What I am saying is when we're looking at building a facility or creating a facility, it is important to put into it, what do we value as a community, what do we want to see, and how will all areas and demographics within our community be best served? Could that even incorporate the use of a skate park at that said facility? That's another option to be explored. As I'm looking at the numbers that are presented, and I do understand and I appreciate, you know, overestimating, but sometimes we want to make sure we put it out to see what are people willing to do or complete the project for, because we have seen architects and builders come at pretty reasonable rates in the past, because they have a prior working relationship with Florence and they want to continue contributing to our community in different ways. For me, I would almost say I'd like to see an RFP go out, and I'm only one person out of our seven that's up here, to say, what can we bring for, you know, develop a multi-gen center? What can we bring into it and what's somebody willing to do for it? I'd like to see something like that happen. Tied to that is also a need, however, and we've communicated this need before as a council as a whole, when it comes down to transportation. Yes, the Town of Florence is part of the CART system, but what we're lacking is an inner transportation system within our own community. We receive lots of funding for different vans, and the vans primarily drive the seniors around, but what about our youth? Other than youth that drive their own vehicles, their parents may drive them, or they take a school bus and they hang out downtown until their parents come pick them up, how are the youth of the various communities being able to interact with one another other than going to school together? There's activities and events down here, and we have people of all different demographics that are unable to access that. So I'd like to see that in our budget regarding bringing in that transportation loop component. Um, last but not least, yes, I do agree with the cemetery. I'd like to see some improvements come forward. We've talked with the mayor of Eloy. Eloy has a beautiful cemetery, and their mayor is also a funeral director, so he has some special knowledge and expertise in this realm, and he said that he would be happy to sit down and talk with our town and assist us with that endeavor. I would like to see that move forward, having, you know, a work session and a committee to follow through on that. Did I miss anything? And I'd like to see something done within the next year.
You did mention at the beginning of the year about the possible work sessions coming up, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I think you spoke everything so eloquently, and thank you for mentioning everything on the list. I completely agree with all of that. I'm also going to ask, how much do we have in the council contingency for this fiscal year? Do you know? Sorry, Lisa, I'm sorry.
Between thirty and forty thousand remains.
So what you're saying is, is that we could possibly, since we've got just a hot minute between here and June 30th, that we could possibly kill off these LED lights and outdoor signs by the end of this fiscal year? Could we get that done with the rest of our contingency?
I defer that to the town manager.
I'm just throwing out an idea, I'm not speaking on behalf of council, I'm just asking the question.
Well, once again, and we're just getting started, I get it, but I will tell you that with the number of projects on the list, that's why I'm taking notes, trying to figure out, but ultimately, we can only do so much with timeframes, but that's a reasonable scope of work and a reasonable amount of time with money we have so we can get those things accomplished. So other ones, we've got some work to do, but we'll have budget discussions, and when we do, I would just suggest to you all that we start looking at some of those priorities. Again, staffing to be able to put some of those together and ultimately do that, as well as track and deal with consultants who may be doing some of the scope is going to be part of our conversation then, but the two you mentioned are straightforward, so can be done.
If council decides to do that with their contingency, I just wanted to see if that was an option.
I support it.
I support it.
Excuse me, councilmember Maldonado, did you have anything more on the cemetery that you wanted us to consider?
Um, just, I think Ally pretty much hit the nail on the head, because I had mentioned about people getting locked in there previously, and so having that gate eliminate a lot of stuff. And, yeah, that was primarily one of the reasons why I brought it up. It was one of my constituents that talked to me about that.
I would just like to add that I'm in support of a multi-generational center, I'm just like, God, the price is crazy. That's my only thing. I agree with the mayor. Transportation, we've been talking about it forever, and when I was young, it was nothing for me to get on the bus and go all over the place. And even if it's just a bus from Anthem to here, and it goes, picks up at eight, does another round at noon, just like CART does, just so that even adults can get back and forth, because unless you qualify for the senior citizens' transportation, we have a large amount of people in Anthem who cannot get to town because they don't have transportation. So, I mean, when people talk about everybody in Florence proper not being able to get places, Anthem has the same problem. So if we can figure out how to connect the two communities, then we don't have to worry so much about where the skate park is, because we know we have a way for our youth and our adults to get back and forth. People looking for jobs, there's growth happening in Anthem with new restaurants and new businesses coming, where people in proper would love to have a job out there, but they don't have the transportation to get out there, or vice versa. The high school, you know, has a late bus that takes kids home at five o'clock if they're involved in activities. There's lots of ways that maybe we can partner with the school or partner with somebody to help us have that transportation. I think it's very important that we start to look at that, because as I look at these things and remember the same conversation I had earlier with the same people that talked to me about our code enforcement, they also talked to me and, you know, economic development. When I bought in Anthem, I bought because of the amenities. And along with that, I understood that I have an HOA fee that supports those amenities. And when they don't do their job as an HOA, we are on them like hotcakes. So it, when businesses look for a place to come, they are looking for amenities, and if they keep seeing our council just shuffle the stop signs down the road and it's taken us this long just to get stop signs, they don't look at us as a value partner. They look at us as a town that struggles to get to the next level. We need to start cutting out some of the wasted time that it is taking us to get things done. And I understand everybody has a lot on their plate and everybody has a lot to do, and you have your project that you are passionate about and I have mine. We have to find a way to merge those together. And if it's as simple as saying, we need lighted stop signs so people stop running these stop signs and they stop hitting our children, then that should be a priority, because that's a child that got hit. It shouldn't be shuffled to the end and we shouldn't a year later be bringing it up because we're all like, wait, wait, what about our stop signs? So Territory Square, same thing. Council was off of topic and council went left instead of staying right. So it's a combination of staff and council keeping each other on task and not allowing one project to then push another project to the back because it doesn't seem as important, because they are important. They are, stop signs, a community center, a lazy river, a skate park, a friggin' speed bump, fixing the holes in the softball fields, so that staff members and other community members aren't falling in the middle of a softball game. Those are all important things to our community. They may not be important to all of staff members or to all of council, but to our community, they are a hundred percent important. It's safety, it's enjoyment of the area you live in. It is so much more than just a multimillion dollar building. It is saying that Florence is here and Florence is going to stay here and Florence is going to thrive, and you should want to move here and you should want to build your business here and raise your family here, and when you graduate, you should want to stay here, because that's where we're leaking, is in our kids. When they graduate, they leave. And then they don't come back till they're ready to retire. I want to capture that, that middle group, and this is how we're going to capture them, by doing these projects.
Councilmember Neal?
I just wanted to just kind of hit on it, throw into our lighted signs. I remember when I first got on the council, because I sit at the crosswalks every now and then, across children, and I've been saying we need lit signs at our crosswalks. Florence PD does a heck of a job when they can, but if y'all were to come out and sit with some of the crosswalk guards, I done been hit, I don't know, almost hit, I don't know how many times, I think that we need to throw that in with our lit signs for our crosswalks. I know we've talked about it in Anthem and other schools, that it's horrible. Some people drive through there like they ain't never seen a kid before in their life, just on the phone drinking a latte, a hundred miles an hour. I want to include the schools with that signage.
Is part of that a school expense or is that a shared school expense? Because if they're school crosswalks?
We could talk to.
That's only my question.
School district.
I don't, because they are the ones that hire the guards.
Sit down and do something together.
Something for discussion. I think can we?
Maybe Chris Salas knows, because he does a lot of road projects, he's one of our biggest spenders.
Can we throw on the high school thing too? The crosswalk right there?
So is the question about if the school should be paying or?
No, I believe the question was when we have like crosswalks around the school and in that area, is it a shared cost? Is it a town cost? It's just, I don't recall any of that specifics, and I didn't prep for that portion.
So both are very possible. So schools have what is called adjacent way funds. So that could be trails, sidewalks, ADA improvements, it could be roadway improvements. We partnered with a school several years ago on Van Herren, and they used adjacent way funds to offset some of the town costs. We went, I'm not sure it was dollar per dollar, it was probably almost six years ago, but we did a big project, probably two, three hundred thousand dollars. And so you can use adjacent way funds, or they are within our right of way, the town can do the project solo. And if a school is working with us, it could be a partnership. So there's, all three of them are very possible.
Will you look at the different options that are available and bring them back to us?
Sure.
Specifically like by the elementary schools, by the high school is what I was hearing. Did I miss anything?
It was the elementary school was that they also need the wrong way signs or the one-way signs, because the traffic is going in the wrong direction. I just sent a picture of that last week. A car was near Duran Street at the elementary school, it's one-way, and people that aren't familiar with here or aren't familiar with that area are going in the wrong direction and almost hit somebody head-on. But I think it's all, all school crosswalks should.
Can we, can we place, so this is, this is, okay, I'm, maybe this is my PTSD of being on council. And you see where I'm going with this, Michelle? Is that when we say we want to accomplish two projects by the end of June, and then we start adding, 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 adding scope, different direction, then nothing happens. And then we end up on June 30th going, we didn't know what to do because we had all these different directions. So this is where I'm saying those are all brilliant ideas, I love them, but can we say, and again, I'm one person, that we want to put one, we want to complete those two projects as directed in there, and then we want to explore our other avenues for, well, if contingency and time allows, we can build on those other projects to include the schools' crosswalks and signs for LEDs this fiscal year? If not, we can put that on the list for next fiscal year?
Yeah, I wasn't talking about completing it with this thirty thousand dollars. I was talking about getting a quote.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're not mixing, because we were talking about doing these two.
Can I just ask for clarification? Just because somewhere I, I got lost in this. Okay, I see the signs, the sixteen and the eighteen, that, okay, that thirty, I'm not even talking about. Okay, so when we were talking about the schools' crosswalk and the stop signs, Mr. Snake, Mr. Neal, are we talking about a physical sign that's in the ground, or are we talking about the signs that they roll out that say stop?
The under sign there, really?
Okay, because I was confused, and I thought, well, if I'm confused, Chris might be confused, because I didn't know what sign we were actually talking about, because I kept picturing the sign that they roll out, and it would be great if that sign was flashing, and that's why I was like, no, that'd be the school's expense, because that's their sign. If it's a stop sign that's in the ground, then yes, that, then I could see why that might be our expense or a shared expense, but now that I'm clear, I'm good. Thank you.
So does everyone agree that you want to go with those two projects and then we can explore sharing costs and/or carrying that cost this fiscal year if budget allows with our contingency? Is that what everybody's sort of thinking, Nicole and Snake? Is that what you guys were thinking too? Yeah?
Is somebody going to verify? I know you said you think we have about that much, but I'm just trying to make sure that there's not something sitting out there that we agreed to pay for that just hasn't been brought to us yet, i.e. high school graduation?
It's already done.
I.e. something like the pool parties, like is there anything that we have obligated ourselves to, it just hasn't been brought to us for approval yet, but we know one of those things? That's all I'm just, I want to make sure if we say we have thirty thousand, that we really have thirty thousand.
Ms. Gómez, the funding source is not the issue, and if we move forward in this direction, they'll be implemented even if it's out of my budget. It's not, that is not the overwhelming issue with this project. So we will get it, we'll get it taken care of.
All right, direction has been given, and I appreciate everybody's conversation. All right, next is item nine B, which is approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Penau County to facilitate design services and right-of-way acquisition to support the construction of roadway improvements, which are much needed. On Hunt Highway from Magma Ranch, Magma Road to Franklin Road, total of five miles as a five-lane arterial roadway. Chris Salas? Chris Salas.
There, there's something I would like to clarify at the very beginning of this It was the town's understanding that the five miles would, I mean, the, the five miles would all be a five-lane facility. That is not clear based on the plans that Penal Ca, Penal County gave me. The five lanes is our segment. So I need to look into getting clarification on what the county plans on doing because the plans that they've given us do not show five lanes to Magma. And so what was sent in an email was essentially that the layout, the survey is for five lanes, but it's not necessarily for implementation. As we're working through this and having these meetings, we have another meeting with the county very soon, I'll get additional clarification on that. Our section will be five lanes throughout the corridor from the railroad to Franklin Road. But it's hard for me to speak for the county when their plans demonstrate something a little differently than what my understanding was. So this project here and this IGA is, is one of two parts. The town originally wanted to do a comprehensive IGA for the entire project. The county wanted to break that up into two pieces and, um, which would be design and right-of-way acquisition. Staff didn't have any issues with breaking it up and it kind of coincides with what Representative Cook has asked us to do, is to essentially get this project shovel-ready. So this will allow us to chase additional funds in the near future. The funding for this may be coming through state appropriation already that has not necessarily been approved. So this could have a very positive impact on our budget. We asked for, I believe, the three point four million, which is coming to you in a future, um, capital improvement project, um, discussion.
Bless you.
Approximately one million dollars in right-of-way costs, approximately a little over two hundred and six thousand dollars in design costs. So, um, one of the good things that came out of this IGA, um, we were pleasantly surprised by the engineering costs for our one point two miles of being two hundred and six thousand dollars. That seems to be a very fair price, especially in today's market. The county will be assisting us in acquiring the right-of-way throughout state land, which, um, for anybody in the room who doesn't, hasn't been through that, it is an arduous process at best. It can take quite a while to do. And, um, having somebody, whether it be Penal County's or Maricopa County's Department of Transportation or the City of Phoenix, they all have what's called a real estate branch. And so they have people who specialize in acquiring right-of-way easements, temporary construction easements. And so Penal County has graciously, um, offered to assist us in that acquisition of right-of-way. I can't even remember how many years Dale Harmon's been doing this, probably close to thirty years. Um, I know that she was very experienced when I first met her almost twenty years ago. So she will be assisting. She's still a part-time employee with the county and she has all the connections to get the right-of-way. We don't have a price on the right-of-way. As part of this process, we will be getting an appraisal and, um, once that appraisal's in, hopefully, so the process is thirty percent design plans, sixty percent design plans. Once you have sixty percent design plans, we will then start working with state land to acquire the right-of-way. You generally do not acquire right-of-way below thirty percent and some agencies go all the way to ninety. The difference between a sixty percent plan and a ninety percent plan is actually the details that are annotated on the plan set. The alignment generally does not change. Your typical section does not change. It's just additional detail. So that's, that's what is needing to be understood is the horizontal alignment of the roadway, which for us is defined, um, currently. And I guess another point of clarification is oftentimes you hear speak about the declaration of roads, the nineteen twenty-two declaration of roads, which on all section lines as well as three diagonal roads within the county, we have thirty-three feet of easement on either side of a, of a section line or in this, there is no section line for Hunt Highway, so it varies throughout the corridor. And this would be, um, essentially measured from existing center line, so it would make sense. So a lot of times when we're asking for, um, right-of-way dedications, we already have that first thirty-three. We ask them to dedicate the full seventy-five when development comes in. However, if we're buying right-of-way, we'll only buy from the thirty-three foot, thirty-third foot to the seventy-fifth foot because we already have that easement. State land does not recognize that thirty-three. So we'll be buying the entire, whatever the greed-upon amount is, one oh five, one oh six, one ten for the entire corridor. And I have been through this before and fought the battle and, and there's no way around it. They do not, like I said, recognize that, which would be sixty-six feet of that right-of-way. So we'll be purchasing the entire approximately hundred and ten feet. With that, are there any questions as it relates to this project or the scope of this IGA?
Are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the IGA that was just I see none. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve this IGA, it's written.
Second, second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item ten is our legislative report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Uh, in terms of my legislative highlights for this week, uh, first up, committee meetings did come to a close this week. Uh, those committee meetings were extended for a week to give lawmakers some additional time to work through bills. Um, so the only, uh, meetings that will be upcoming this week in terms of committees will be appropriations as they do some cleanup work and hear the final bills that were, uh, passed through committee last week. Uh, with that, we expect to see a, a lot of floor action and potentially some strikers in those appropriations committees. Uh, so we will keep an eye on any potential bills, uh, like of that nature. Of the more than sixteen hundred bills that have been introduced, uh, thirty-seven have been sent to the governor, seventeen have been signed into law and twenty have been vetoed, including the food tax bill, uh, Senate Bill ten sixty-three, uh, which I think was the bill Becky was most concerned with or one of the bills. Uh, this bill would have eliminated our voter-approved food tax, uh, which is dedicated to recreation infrastructure, uh, projects and improvements. Uh, so good news there. Uh, we did send a veto request letter to the governor's office last Monday and, uh, in her veto letter, she cited the significant outreach and concerns that she received from cities and towns, uh, on this issue. Regarding the state budget, uh, we know both sides are talking, but that's about all we know at this point. Uh, one item that's highly expected to play a role in budget negotiations is the elimination of the residential rental tax, which is, uh, actually a bill the governor already vetoed in February, uh, but has been reintroduced as a strike everything amendment. Of the revenue bills we were tracking and outlined, uh, at the beginning of this session, uh, this would have the least impact on this, on this town, eliminating, um, the residential rental tax. Uh, about a hundred thousand dollars in revenues goes to the general fund, um, annually, but we'll definitely keep watch on this bill and oppose any measures which are seeking to, uh, reduce local control or eliminate any town revenues. Next, we have a few, um, zoning bills I wanted to highlight. Uh, last meeting, I shared that the primary byright zoning bill, which was, uh, Senate Bill eleven seventeen, had failed during third read. And so in, in response, Senator Kaiser broke eleven seventeen into various pieces and has introduced three new housing strikers, uh, which are progressing through both, both chambers quickly. First, there's Hou, uh, House Bill twenty-five thirty-six, which passed out of committee and is pending a floor vote in the senate. This is a zoning preemption bill, which states that cities and towns greater than twenty-five thousand residents must administratively approve all applications to rezone one land type into a residential land type. So this could include commercial to multifamily, industrial to multifamily, multifamily to single family. Any rezonings into any residential land type would have to be administratively approved by cities or towns. Um, this would preempt any off, also preempt any off-street parking requirements, uh, would severely restrict the design or aesthetic review process, uh, would eliminate all citizen review boards and processes, and states that owners within a rezoning, uh, can only challenge an application, uh, if they provide clear and convincing evidence, um, that the rezoning creates an issue, which is the highest standard needed, needed to challenge, uh, rezonings. There are exceptions for historic districts, um, so small bit of good news there, but twenty-five thirty-six, um, would, would preempt, uh, most of our zoning, if not all of our zoning practices, uh, for the town. Uh, the second bill, uh, Senate Bill eleven sixty-three is also expected to go to the floor soon. This mandates the completion, um, of a housing needs assessment every five years. It mandates at-risk permitting for grading, drainage, and earth-moving activities. It limits setback and lot coverage requirements and removes, uh, lot size minimums greater than four thousand feet, which, uh, could allow, um, six to ten units per acre. The legislation states six. The league said that could probably result in ten acre, ten units per acre. Um, it also removes prohibitions on manufactured homes, uh, placing those within residential areas, that will be allowed. And then, um, it mandates certain areas must be rezoned, uh, or zoned for duplex and triplex construction. And finally, there's eleven, uh, Senate Bill eleven sixty-one, which is a new byright zoning bill. However, this bill only applies to, um, cities and towns with a population greater than five hundred twenty-five thousand, uh, so it'd be Phoenix, uh, Tucson, and soon to be Mesa. Um, and it would, um, mandate, uh, low-income multifamily development byright near light rail or streetcar stops. And so with this bill, the league is just worried that it's going to set a precedent for byright zoning, which could spread throughout the state and other areas outside of, you know, the light rail, uh, and its, and its proximity. Unfortunately, all of these bills have some level of bipartisan support, um, so we may need to reach out to the governor with additional veto requests in the weeks ahead. Finally, uh, I did want to provide a quick update on the ARTAC transportation bill. That's the rural transportation bill that, um, has projects from, uh, a variety of municipalities across the state, rural municipalities that is, and contains our two Hunt Highway widening projects. Um, that bill passed through the House and, uh, went to the senate in early March. Uh, in mid-March, it was approved by the Senate Transportation Committee, five-one, and is being heard by Senate Appropriations tomorrow. Um, this bill will ultimately be folded into the state budget process. However, it's very positive to see it moving through both, both chambers. Um, and so we'll continue to reach out and express our support and remind our legislators of these priorities, um, as they continue, uh, with that budget process. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Councils, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Graves?
I have a, I have a, I don't know what it is. I have, do we have any indication of, um, our new governor's stance on our prisons and where, like, you know, I know previously one supported private versus public and just kind of like, do we have an idea of what impact we might have from this governor on our town's largest industry?
Yes. So I would say it's still too early to tell. She has, um, initiated a number of review boards and processes to, um, analyze the prison system and review current practices. Um, I, I did watch an interview she did on this topic, um, I think it was late last week, uh, but she's not giving any specifics at this point in terms of changes, revisions, or anything of that nature. I will say we are, uh, in contact with, um, the, the director's office and are looking to, uh, set up a meeting with our new town manager to discuss many of those pending, um, items that you mentioned. And so we'll, uh, I'll be able to provide an update on that once that meeting occurs. Um, I think the new director's first availability was in early May, so, uh, I should be able to bring something back in terms of some updates, uh, perhaps in mid-May.
Thank you very much. Next up, our department reports. Is there any member of council that has any question in regards to any of the department reports? Vice Mayor.
I'm just requesting that, um, and some of the department reports, it's, looks like we're just copy-paste. Um, if we can get maybe a different color, uh, where something has been added or changed so that we know that, that's something that we can, okay, there's something happening in that particular area. That's all.
Councilmember Neal?
I don't know how many people have asked me, Allison, when does the pool open?
Memorial Day weekend.
Okay, I have something to tell them then. Thank you.
Councilmember Cortez?
I have, um, a couple of things and you can email me the answers or however, uh, update on the top, the tap house and what its completion, like it, it's, it's become one of those items that we're asked about frequently because it's taking so long to see any movement. Um, so I would like, and, because there are people that are saying, you know, hey, if they're not going to build it, so there are people that are looking to maybe purchase that lot and build something. So if we could just get an update on that, it would be nice. Um, and then also with, uh, cleanup, I know that I have had conversations with Lisa, sorry, rest, all my conversations are with Lisa, um, about when we're talking about cleanup, let's not just focus on our residents, let's focus on our businesses as well. I know that there are some containers that are being stored on a lot that, um, is just behind Main Street that aren't supposed to be there because we don't allow containers. Um, and then, you know, we have a couple other business lots that just need to be cleaned up, maybe need to have a, uh, some type of screened fencing built so that we don't have the residents that live across the street from it maybe don't have to look at what is being stored there. Um, and then Allison, I have had several requests that we look at implementing some sports programs for girls. I, I don't have teenagers, mine, mine does not play sports, so I'm going to struggle with this one for a minute because I'm not aware of what we offer. But specifically a softball that is geared for like thirteen to fifteen-year-olds, because we're, we hit the little kids and then we kind of don't do anything for that because I know that, um, we don't have a lot of league, uh, competitive teams out here. And so the comments that are being made to me is that, um, we're suffering a little bit in our sports programs because when we compete against the other areas that have these competitive outside teams that happen on the off-seasons. And so if we could find a way to implement that, um, they would greatly appreciate it. So I've done my job in bringing it to your attention. And that's it.
Thank you. And now for our town manager report.
Yeah, given the time, uh, working through budgets, so it's been fun. Obviously, the last couple of weeks, we've been discussing similar, all the things you discussed today about what's on the budget, what's in the budget, do you guys realize what it is? Uh, when are we going to get those done? Those kinds of things. And then ultimately, you know, what gets presented to you for budgets in addition, dare we'd say, to just the operations, uh, which is part of that discussion. So, uh, you're all on, uh, task alongside staff, so that's a good thing. It helps, uh, when that's the case. Uh, so I look forward to the meetings here coming up in the next couple of weeks where we go through those and kind of continue to get on the same page and understand. Uh, regional meetings, I was in an East Valley regional, uh, meeting with the other managers, uh, got to meet them. Several of them I knew, but obviously, uh, coming in a different, uh, position now, uh, so that was good. Uh, did that this afternoon. Everybody's mind is everything we're talking about, Prop four hundred and the ability for the legislature to kind of give back the opportunity to go after that funding ultimately may lead to, uh, regional transportation, uh, benefits. And then finally, again, I'll just, uh, remind you, we do have an additional staff member. So I came on, so that's a plus one when I came on. This is a plus two. So you'll have Paul King coming in, helping out Allison and her crew. Uh, obviously, you talked about post-imbute and those kind of things. Those are just stuff that additional staff is going to help, I think, uh, with some leadership on and be able to kind of put some, uh, project scopes together and make sure timelines are, are put together and met, if you will, uh, than, uh, with staff trying to do operational. So I look forward to that. He's actually, uh, coming on at the end of the week just so that he has an opportunity to see the things that are happening for, uh, Country Thunder. So that's a pretty cool opportunity, uh, for him to see that at the end of the week. So any other things I can add? That would be it, I guess. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're glad that you're here. This is our second call to the public. Is there anybody online or in the audience that would like to speak at this time? I do see Mrs. Sheri Har. Hello, can you hear us? Hello, can you hear us?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Couple of things that I would like to address. First, I would love to see you guys have a work session and come up with some goals and objectives. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, come up with some goals and objectives with specific timeframes, like when you guys were talking about all the different items this evening, which I think they're all very important, but come up with some specific guidelines and timeframes and what's most important, and then go from there. That would be my recommendation, just based on what I'm seeing. Also, on the C Click Fix, there has been a property that has been reported numerous, I'm going to say more than five times, when I say numerous times. It's on Elizabeth Street, it's directly across from 960 South Elizabeth Street. One of the concerns is that we're going to have somebody who's going to die in one of these homes that are uninhabitable. I think that's the word. But anyway, we did have somebody pass this past week that should not have been staying in the home. He had been cited several times for trespassing, but I'm not sure if you all are aware, I'm sure some of the people that are local understand that this individual did have drug habits and he did have mental health problems. And he did pass, and it's unfortunate that he did pass in that home that he should not have been allowed to be in. The home should have been demolished years ago. I'm talking twenty years ago, the home should have been demolished. So again, if you guys can take a look at that, look at the homes that should be knocked down, hold these people accountable that own the homes, that would be great because it was a sad situation. No parent should have to go through that. With that being said, also Arbor Day, is that going to be advertised anywhere? It's my understanding that there's something that people can donate $200, have a tree donated or placed on behalf of your loved ones. When is that? Where do you get the paperwork to do that? What is the ins and outs? That would be great if that could get out to everybody, because I know I'm that person that would like to do that. Also, once again, cemetery, I hope you guys do have a work session. I've been asking for a water spigot for seven years now. My dad is born and raised in this town as well. Again, we're seven generations deep, and I think it's ridiculous we cannot get a water spigot near his gravesite. With that being said, I think I've covered everything. Again, since the C Click Fix, I see some movement on it. I feel like we've taken three steps forward and maybe two steps back. Again, you guys have access to that, please look into that. We want to beautify our town. We don't want to be in HOA, but we do need to beautify your town. Ms. Cortez?
Thank you so much. Our system does do an automatic mute, Ms. Har, but I have taken notes of everything, and the appropriate staff members will reach out. And Councilmember Cortez did make a comment just now, saying if you would email her, and she will follow back with you. Mrs. Maldonado.
She's muted.
Mrs. Maldonado, can you unmute, please?
Am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. I just want to talk a little trash. As far as the rate increase and trying to, whatever it is with the, I don't even know what I'm trying to say, anyway, how do you go about, what is the process for the town when you have homeowners that are using one trash can and their trash is like as tall as their house? And is there a process, like they don't pick up the trash and they have to have two trash cans? So that's my question and concern.
All right, thank you. What I will do is I will have that director reach out to you to communicate that procedure. Mrs. Ruiz.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm Adam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council Members. Thank you for taking my comments. I would just like to start by saying that dealing with the C Click Fix, I have seen some tremendous movement within the last two weeks. And I've got to say that, one, not only is it surprising, but it's very pleasant. And as I continue to go around our little community, it is becoming more and more noticeable that lots are being cleaned, areas are being cleaned, neighborhoods are looking somewhat cleaner. Yes, we do have a long way to go, but like I said, in the past two weeks, it's been tremendous, and I really appreciate that. And just want to give kudos out to the folks that are behind all of that. And I just want to say, Ms. Cortez, all that you picked up and spoke on today, as well as several other of the council members, I just have to say in agreeance, yes, yes, and yes. I kept picking my little hand here on my screen, I pretty much wore a hole in my screen, wanting to raise my hand to get an opportunity to speak, speak, speak on all of this. And I do have to agree that a lot of times, as I'm following these meetings, whether it be on Zoom, and much of the time Zoom for now, or in-person, it does seem like we go three hundred and sixty, you know, in three hundred and sixty different ways and have a hard time nailing down and prioritizing what's actually needed here in our small community. And that's, you know, be it north or south of the Gila River, but I'm glad to see that now some light has been shone upon all of that, and hopefully, moving forward, we as community people can see that, see more of a direction. And then the last thing I wanted to add is that when I listen to all these items, I'm just thinking to myself, oh, dear Lord, and all I want to do is request to have a carnival. You know, I was looking, and I have been working somewhat closely with Ms. Felice and, you know, communicating back and forth with her, something that would kind of go side by side with our Relay for Life. Now, the American Cancer Society, they won't sponsor that, but in speaking with Allison and maybe a little bit with people through her, it looks like there is some footwork being done. The actual theme for this year's Relay for Life is Carnival of Hope. And I know our community has not seen a carnival in several years, and just thought that maybe that might boost a little bit more interest for our Relay for Life locally, but also give families here locally and also north of.
Mrs. Ruiz, our system automatically mutes it at three minutes. If you would like, I am interested to hear what more you have to say, so please reach out to us via email or phone call. And I will also follow up with Ms. Felice. I do see Mrs. Maldonado's hand up, and I noted that she had not utilized all of her three minutes. Is it because she still needs to communicate something? Did I cut her off shorter?
I'm not sure.
No?
We're going to find out.
Yes. Because she only had the one-minute-and-ten-second marking.
She's muted.
Okay. Is there anybody in person that would like to comment or speak at this time? All right, Mrs. Maldonado, did you have anything more that you wanted to add?
Uh, how do I get this thing going? No.
All right, thank you so much. With that, I'm going to go ahead and close the call to the public. And our next item is call to the council. Councilmember Neal.
I just wanted to, I think the last meeting, somebody said something, but I keep getting questions about the sign that's down, and maybe we put on our website, I know we've already, I talked to our new town manager, it's being looked into, maybe we put something on the website, because I get a bunch of questions about that. I could have swore somebody said something about it last week, the sign that's down, the big Walk the Florence sign. And so if we can put something on the website that we're getting something done, that would be great. Also, can't believe I talked this much about cheerleaders ever in my life. The cheerleaders presented the council with their plaque with their tenth place at Nationals. So I'm going to give this to Lisa, she's going to put it up in the proper place, and thank you cheerleaders, and kick ass. That's all I got.
Councilmember Cortez. I apologize. I would like to say that I had an absolute blast. I had so much fun at the Michelle Gallagher Tournament, and I am not an athlete at all, and I let all my teammates know that I run like a duck and I throw like, I don't even know, but I actually surprised myself and I did a good job. And I'm sad that not everybody was able to see how good our team did, but we did an awesome job. Just the fun we had, trash-talking with other teams, all good-hearted, and meeting people that were coming from all over. I mean, there were teams that come from everywhere, and this was the first time I had attended the event. So I am looking forward to us participating again. They were very grateful and gracious that we were there and that we continue to support them. And I want to encourage us as a staff and as a council to support all events like this that are happening, if it's, you know, let's do a kickball tournament, because that's more of a style, but anything that's happening, let's try to participate and let's try to support and get out there, because getting to talk to the people that were there and them seeing our firefighters and our Public Works guy and our brand-new town manager, so many people were impressed that our town manager participated because it was something they're not used to. They're not used to that. So they were so impressed, and Lisa was there being a cheerleader and making sure everybody had sunscreen on and water, and it was just great to see everybody there. And so I was so excited for that. I'm looking forward to the events that are coming up, and I'm not going to steal everybody's talking points, so I'll end there, but I just, this town is doing great things, and I think we're going to just really continue to grow and be positive. So thanks.
Councilmember Bucelado.
Well, some of those things I already had on my paper, but I just wanted to say good job to Florence PD. Since the recent school shooting, they've upped their police presence at the schools around here even more than they were before. They've always kind of had a presence there, but, I mean, they had multiple cars. One of the days, our crossing guard was getting rained on, and Mr. Franklin gave her a poncho out of his car so she wouldn't get wet walking the kids across the street. And I just wanted to say, like, it's little things like that that remind me that I'm raising my children in the right place. And I think just the sense of, you know, community and support of our law enforcement, our fire, I think all that is just, you know, really important, and it's days like that where these other small towns are experiencing these horrible acts that we come together and make our children feel safe, and that's the things that I think everybody, including the parents, will, you know, always remember. So I just wanted to thank you guys for doing that. I mean, my son even came home from the high school, and he's like, yeah, there's a lot of cops around lately, and, you know, so I just wanted to say thank you as a parent myself for, you know, helping protect our children. The other thing is C Click Fix, I did get on there, I did get an alert for a property that was actually put as the wrong address, and they corrected it, and it was nice to see that the lot had been cleaned and they had even uploaded a picture of it cleaned. So where you have to submit a picture of the property, they came back and they submitted a picture showing it was taken care of, and that's the only one I checked out this week, but it's because I got an alert on it because I had fixed the address on there. But I did want to say to, you know, everybody in that department, thank you. We can really see a difference. And also, Road to Country Thunder is this weekend, so.
Blessing.
Road to Country Thunders this weekend, they have a really good vendor lineup and a really good entertainment lineup, so hopefully, we see you guys all there, supporting all of our local artists and vendors, and it's always a good time. So, and again, thank you guys all for coming out to the tournament and participating at the softball tournament. I had a blast. Family is super thankful, and a lot of money was raised for the kids. So if you guys haven't checked it out, they do it every year, usually in March, and it's a great event, even if you just attend and put in a raffle, which our town manager won a brand-new Traeger Grill, his first time ever putting in, so congratulations on that, Russ. I've never won. Congratulations! So I just wanted to say thank you. I also feel like we're heading in a really good direction, and I know sometimes up here that we have a lot of discussion, but like I've said before, I would much rather have discussion up here than behind closed doors. So thank you.
Councilmember Maldonado.
All right, I'd just like to briefly echo what some of my counterparts said. Thanks for everybody that supported us out there and cheered us on, and for all the good sportsman conduct that was out there. It was amazing seeing everybody come together for a good cause. Also, welcome to Mr. Paul King, our new Community Services Director, and thank you, Ally, for the good job that you've done as interim. Appreciate everything you've done so far. Penal Partnership, had a really good time this past Friday with Russ and with Harvey out at Maricopa, and seeing that a lot of the Board of Supervisors had kind of similar stuff happening and kind of similar issues that we have, and Rhodes was one of them. And that it seems like there was some shuffling that went around on some of the different districts, but all in all, I think they're looking out for what we want and trying to work with us moving forward in all the different projects that we've got going on. And finally, Arbor Day, I'll be out there, God willing, trying to plant some trees. And also on Saturday, I'll be out there at Country Thunder, so hope to see y'all out there.
Councilmember Larson.
A lot of the things I wanted to say have already been said. I think that I'm, well, first of all, I'm so glad that Nicole brought the Michelle Gallagher Foundation's softball tournament to us as a project. And as much as I hate doing sports, I am more of the rah-rah from the sidelines. It was so much fun. I'm glad you guys voluntarily told me that I'm going, and then I was forced to be there. I did have a blast, made it on base, threw a ball in, I was pretty proud of myself. And what made me more proud as a mom is my kids on the sidelines, they were so proud of me. She made it on base! How did that happen? So it was so much fun to see all of that. So just the camaraderie and all of that, I think it helped us unify as a team, but also it helped us support a great charity and have a lot of fun. Allison, you're the MVP, so we appreciate you helping and coordinating everything, and also, yeah, wishing you the best. And then also, I just wanted to say about my position as far as the skate park and everything, I know I talked a lot about it before, but I just wanted to say that, first of all, I respect everybody on this board, and I respect our community, and I want everyone to know that what, where this goes or what scope these things look like, we're just having that discussion, and it's all up in the air. So all of those things are flexible. I just can say what my thoughts are, and they're something that could change over time. So don't hold anything against me as she said, and this is what she wants. I'm willing to have that discussion and willing to have that conversation. It's just, that's, you know, where my starting point is at. So I just wanted to clarify some of that. So otherwise, I think that's it.
All right. Vice Mayor Mendoza.
Well, unfortunately, I couldn't make it to the softball game because I was celebrating my twentieth wedding anniversary, and if I wanted to have a place to sleep, I had to do that one.
We were there until night time. You could have slept there.
I wanted to stay at home. Aside from that, though, I mean, I think... I wanted to stay at home. Aside from that, though, I mean, I think we're doing pretty good as a town. We're working together, we're starting to make some good changes. Some things that I'd like to see in the future is maybe some of these CIP projects with some timeframes attached to them, things that we put up, you know, listening to the public, you know, I agree that we do need to put timeframes. I believe that we do need to prioritize. So I would like to see a little bit more of that. I guess that's all. Thank you.
I can see that syncing with our, like, synch, as in S-Y-N-C-H, like synergize, work together with our strategic plan, and how we've communicated prior regarding putting those goals and timelines, as we can watch towards the success of the projects that we push forward. During the softball tournament, Russ, number 42, guys, you missed an amazing arm out there, consistent pitches. You did a good job. Michelle, you definitely brought the cheer with Nicole of saying, hey, guys, we have these pink tutus. Aces. Council Maldonado made me laugh so hard that evening when he said, hey, do you have a glove that looks like it has leprosy? I now know what leprosy looks like. Yes, I accidentally have your glove, and will return it after the meeting. It was a great time. It was a lot of fun. My strategy, you know, Michelle, definitely she did, she loved to talk trash. And I took the approach, I'm like, Michelle, talk them up, keep telling them, if you hit the ball, I don't have to catch it. It worked really well for me. I didn't have to catch a lot of balls. So anyhow, we were really close. That second game was so close. We definitely improved, and we're going to be practicing and getting better, and we're looking forward to next year. Our MVP was Allison. Allison Felice is the MVP of our team. Let's give her a round of applause. She brought everybody together, rallied, and did amazing. So on to just a little bit of serious talk. I'm not going to reiterate, like, anything else that has happened. We all know what's going on in the future moving forward. I do have a meeting coming up with Representative Martinez. We're going to discuss budget and policy issues. So we're always thankful for our elected officials that want to hear from the local town and continue to communicate and work with us. Our Board of Supervisors has been open. We've been talking transportation with them. So we are on a great path moving forward. One more bit of seriousness that I had is just something a little that everybody can do, because sometimes we have what I call the illusion of safety in a community, because the town of Florence is the safest community. But sometimes, even in the safest community, you could let your guard down, and you might forget to lock your car door. And maybe some people decide that they want to go through a neighborhood and open all of the said car doors that may not be locked, or whatever and whatnot. With the advancement in technology and communication, the beauty of it is, we'll always find who commits these crimes, especially when people come together and talk. So as our public officials say, if you see something, say something. Recently, even through the power of social media, two separate communities, Bella Vista and Anthem at Merrill Ranch, happened to be two of the areas that were hit by a recent attack. Well, what was interesting is, in one of the attacks here in Anthem, somebody had actually taken, like, a hat, a glove, and a key, a boat key out of all things. Somehow, that boat key ended up in another car at Bella Vista. Well, because of the power of social media and people communicating together, these two people were also able to get together, and this person got their boat key back. If you're working with public safety as well, numerous hours of video and camera footage, in color, black and white, consistency among them. As I said, people are always bound to get caught, but I'm going to go back to the illusion of safety, lock your stuff up, keep watch, and if you see something, call it in. If you don't know the non-emergency number, call 911. They will respond, especially when people are breaking into your stuff. With that, we are adjourned. Need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn from regular session?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Have a beautiful evening, everybody.